Call a meeting into order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Selaya?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Montano?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
We have a form.
Need a motion?
A motion we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Let's go.
We have a motion numerous seconds adjourned to executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
That's taken. We have a motion to adjourn from executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we're not going to have an invocation. If we just take a moment of silence remembering those who have passed, remembering people who have struggled during the labor movement, that we had Labor Day, and also keeping in mind Eddie Martinez who passed away from cancer just yesterday. And then we'll stay standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. This will be the first call to the public where the public is invited to comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matter is properly noticed for discussion or legal action. I have one request before Lena Austin.
Mayor Rankin and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I am simply requesting one more time that you not take action on the TS zoning tonight, that you either postponed it or sent it back to planning and zoning for more understanding by all of the people touching the border of that property so that we can understand it. I'm asking you very much to do the right thing. I don't know if you have the procedural ability to move it forward one block to the corner of First Street so all of us have the option to sell our property or not in the TS zoning so that we are included and part of this. And at some point, you're going to have to begin the integration between this exclusive neighborhood that will be built in the TS zoning with the abandoned part of town, which it appears to be. If there's large walls between the two, there have to be some other alternatives to make sure that that part of town is integrated with the rest of town. I chose to live in the country for something I call rural excellence, which includes quietness, two stoplights, family community feeling, and all of the things that I grew up loving in a small town. So I would hope that should this be approved tonight and it sails through, there might be some conversations later about how to maintain this feeling of rural excellence in the country. But the first preference would be that you include all of the landowners in the TS zoning. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience have anything for public comment? Saying no movement, I'll close the public comment.
Item eight, public hearings and presentations. Eight A, public hearing on an ordinance number 601-13 in ordinance of the town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, amending the town code of ordinances titled fifteen land uses, chapter 150 Development Code, section 150.01. Defined words, section 150.047, district use and regulations table, sections 150.055, manufactured home subdivision, and section 150.068, recreational vehicle parks and/or subdivisions. Mark Dickoff will be handling this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item that we have here tonight, it is a public hearing, I'm going to give you a quick overview. Essentially, what this is proposing is some updates to the manufactured home subdivision and the RV section of the code per the direction of the mayor and the town council in past work sessions and discussions that we've had. Specifically, the main item of consideration here is that in a code many, many years ago, there was a requirement that when a new manufactured home was placed within the town, that it not be over a certain age frame, age limit. I believe it was between three to five years. And over the years of doing code updates, that provision was removed from the code. And then recently, I know there was some manufactured homes that were located downtown that were of an older vintage that kind of brought this issue to the table again. So there's a few things that we want to address in the code. Number one is the age requirement. And I want you to know first and foremost that the changes that we're talking about are, do nothing to impact the existing Florence Gardens, Caliente area, those are all legal and they'll continue to do what they're doing. But we're talking about areas that don't have existing legal conforming manufactured homes or RV parks on them. In regards to manufactured homes, there is an age limit now applied, and it would be five years from the date of construction. There are several updates that just to update the terminology in the code, there was a lot of references to interchangeable references to mobile home or manufactured home or trailer park or some antiquated definitions, and those are updated. And then also, I will note that in the R16 conventional zoning district, the provision to potentially allow a manufactured home as a conditionally permitted use is removed, also addressing some of the concerns that we've heard about placing manufactured homes in the downtown area outside of a structured manufactured home subdivision. So those are the main changes that we are proposing here. This did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they sent forward a unanimous recommendation for approval. And like I said, tonight, as a public hearing on this item, the action on this would occur on September 16th. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any member of the council have any question?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So what we're saying is no more manufactured homes in the town limits other than in a manufactured home subdivision? We're not going to allow any more manufactured homes other than in a manufactured home subdivision? Is that the way I read it?
Member Hawkins, Mayor, members of the council, there actually are still rural zoning districts where you have a large lot, a half acre, an acre or more, and you actually can have a manufactured home in those zoning districts. And then you could have them in the manufactured home subdivision or manufactured home park, but not in a traditional site-built, single-family, 6,000 square foot lot scenario.
What about the areas that already have manufactured homes that aren't acres or acres and a half that have manufactured homes on them? We're not going to allow them, let's say one of them burns, or they decide that they want to bring in a new one or a different model? We're not going to allow that?
The areas where you have a legal conforming manufactured home on a property, you would continue to be able to do that, and there'd be opportunities to replace it. But what we're talking about is on an R16, 6,000 square foot lot, which would be a normal subdivision area where you have site-built homes, we've had this provision in the code that I think has only been used once in six years, I believe, for an R16 area to potentially allow manufactured homes as a conditionally permitted use, and that would be removed. But if you still have MHS zoning, which there's scattered MHS zoning areas throughout the town that don't have a home on them today, you would be able to have a home on that. So either an individual lot that is MHS, or in an actual park like a Florence Gardens or something, you would have it. So there's still quite a few opportunities to do it, it just, you're talking about the age requirement, and you're talking about the R16 area that you're seeing the changes on.
Anything, Bill?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Tom?
Yeah, I think one of the important things, the reasons why we brought this back up was because of the age limitations. We'd seen a few modulators come in that seemed to be a little bit older, and we constantly want to improve on the appearance of the town, so we want to make sure that people are not going to bring something in that's going to diminish that. One of the items that you had in reference on here also was RV vehicles, and I'm assuming that those are, that the purpose of that in there is that people are not allowed to live in an RV unit that are parked out at the side of a residential unit or something like that. I don't really see too much of that happening, but as far as your regular citizen that happens to have a camp trailer or whatever, they're still allowed to keep that in an area on their lot without being in violation of the code, correct?
Mayor, Members Selaya and others, actually, this section of the code does not pertain to the storage of an RV, so absolutely, if you have a lot that accommodates it, and you have the room to store an RV or a boat or something on your yard, you can continue to do so under the current provisions of the code. This just deals with when you have an RV, which is either a park model or one that you drive onto the lot, such as Caliente or Tierra del Sol, areas like that. And there's not an age requirement put on an RV. And the reason we didn't do it there is because in a lot of cases, you're driving your RV, and you could have an RV that was...
Does it address people living in an RV on a house, on an area that already has a house?
No, because this is for where they're permanently allowed, and where it's temporarily allowed would be under different provisions. So say they're doing a remodel on their home, or they've had a fire, or, you know, certain times of the years, there's people visiting for the holidays, or there's temporary occasions, and that's dealt with, that's not a permanent thing, so that's dealt with under different provisions.
Yeah, I just don't want to see them become a permanent thing, where all of a sudden you've got somebody renting out of somebody's RV that's next to their house or something like that.
The only way to permanently live in an RV is to have it in an RV zoning district.
Mark?
Question I have is what is the difference in RV or manufactured home that meets the code for electrical wiring, looking at also sewer? If it's six years old compared to five years old? I mean, why do we choose five instead of looking at something older, 10 years old, where they use fuses 15 years ago? I mean, what is the difference? Why do we choose five years? Some of those modular homes and manufactured homes still look good and still meet code.
I don't disagree with that comment, Mayor and council. There's nothing magical per se about the five-year timeframe. I know in the past, though, we've had a timeframe of the three to five-year range, and we were trying to put that back into play what we had before. At the same time, we also didn't, we wanted to be cautious that in a case of Florence Gardens area, for instance, if they had a home that was built in 1980, didn't want to say, well, no, you can't replace it unless it's five years old, so that type of requirement doesn't apply there. So the five-year rule, certainly, it could be five, six, seven, and you're not going to see a substantial amount of difference. The main difference that really that you do see is when you start getting probably beyond 10, 10, 15 years, and certainly when you see that distinction between a mobile home, which is pre-76, and a manufactured home, which is after 76, you see major differences in regards to water, sewer, the other utilities, they're all hooked up on the system the same way.
So that was my question. If they all still meet all the codes for electrical and utilities, why are we choosing five years instead of 10 years ago? Just because the outside looks older?
They tend not to, they tend not to age as well as a site-built home, but that's not something that you could generally apply across the board. The five-year is a number that's been suggested, it's a number that's fairly uniform in other jurisdictions, and there's been some law cases that have been out there that have said five years or so is a pretty reasonable term. If you're going to put an age restriction out there, it's a reasonable term to have. If you have something shorter than that, that's probably being overly restrictive. If you go beyond 10 years, then you're probably, you know, you're going the other way, so...
I mean, I just look at, when you're buying a manufactured home, five years ago, or 2013, that means that that manufactured home was built in 2008, and five years is a blink of an eye, especially as you get older. So you're not looking at the manufactured home as being that old. It's still fairly new if it was taken care of. But it means all the utility codes as something that's six years old. That's what I just look at. If somebody bought a home, and they could only afford a six-year-old home, manufactured home, or a seven-year-old manufactured home, and they want to bring it to Florence, we're going to deny them just because it's not five years old? That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it's a good point, and again, there's nothing magical about that number, it's just going back to what was in the code and following the direction that we should have, we should have a number out there. So definitely, it could be debated whether that number falls somewhere between, you know, 10 and five, if you'd like.
I mean, if a home is eight years old, and it's in a location where all the utilities are turned off, do we evict the people and condemn it because it's eight years old, or are we looking at something that's older?
You're starting to look at different areas. What we're talking about is if you place a new, if you place a new manufactured home on a vacant lot, as far as existing stuff, it would continue to be, you know, it would be allowed up until the point some issue came in where it became a non-conformity potentially.
Well, that was a big issue we had probably six years ago to eight years ago. We were condemning modular homes or manufactured homes if they had their utilities turned off for over 30 days. And I could understand, a lot of them did not meet code, but a lot of them did, and we allowed it. So now we're saying you can't move one into our area because it's over five years old.
Ruben, if I could ask Mark, we had an ordinance on the books in the past, and I can't remember if I was on the council, if I was chief of police when that thing passed. And the age limit at that time was seven years, I'm not, I could be mistaken. And at that time, I brought up the fact that a prison employee, a Department of Corrections employee, living out in the prison trailer park, if they retired or got fired, and their mobile home was X amount of years old, they couldn't live here anymore. They'd have to move it outside the town limits to someplace.
Or sell it.
Well, they could resell it over there, yeah. Now, and I think at that time, we were looking at, and when we did it, it was over the, when there's still aluminum wiring in some trailers. That had a portion to do with it, when the council instituted that. Is it fair to the people?
No.
I don't think so. But is it also not, is it, I don't believe it's fair to the person that has a stick-built house to have that moved in next to him and devalue his property just to save that? Because if you take a look at the property rates in Penale County and Florence, the, your home is valued upon the surrounding area and everything. In a mobile home park, a mobile home will actually, if you're not in a park, will actually devalue your home. The safety factor is what we looked at before under the wiring code. Now, all that's been changed under the Uniform Building Code for these units, they all have to have copper wiring now instead of the aluminum wire.
How long ago was that?
That, I don't remember. That's what I, I don't remember. Wilbur, do you, let me ask ex-Mayor Freeman, were you on the council at that time when we did that?
Yes, I believe so.
And it was over the wiring, the wiring and the look of the home, isn't that correct?
Right.
Right, it was aesthetics. But moving them from, you know, once you have a home that's, and if we'd go out to the, again, Caliente and Florence, or Florence Gardens is completely different from the prison trailer park, the homes in Florence Gardens are all ground set. Where out here at the prison park, they're not, they're movable. But yeah, that was, we had a big discussion on that, and I was actually against any kind of ordinance to prohibit those people from moving in town, if that happened. If they couldn't sell it, and if they did get terminated, they retired. Mainly, I always look at the retired people.
And I could understand it if it had, you know, didn't have the copper wiring. I could understand it if it's 15 years old and the roof had leaking, and some of the bolts are coming out, and now it's not straight anymore. But why five years when a six-year-old trailer or manufactured home is just as good as a five-year-old?
I guess the question, Mark, is that an average around the state, or is that just a number that you developed, or how did we come up with a five-year?
Ever, when I started, everybody kept referring to, there was this provision in the code that a manufactured home couldn't be older than three to five years. Everybody kept...
Who is everyone?
I think what we were looking at at that time was a lot of the aesthetics of bringing these modulators into the area, and then exactly what the mayor said was having somebody that had a standard stick-built home or a brick house, having a neighbor move in with something that was either ground set, we wanted to make sure that, at least that the quality was there. And five was, I think that was the number that had always been established, so I think that's where the number came from. But it had a lot to do with aesthetics, and it had a lot to do with cleaning up some of the older, as the inventory of older mobiles in the town were, we had the ability to remove them, that's what we used in order to move them out.
The thing that we had, of course, we're going a different route, and I don't see that in here, as far as when the utilities are turned off and then turned back on, that's when we were doing the inspection, is that correct, Mark? And at that time, they were doing the inspections, and they, and I agree, I know some people here in town lost quite a few mobile units due to the fact that they couldn't pass our new code, even though they'd been existing and had been serviced prior to the code. But when they shut the utilities off, that's where the key came in.
Yeah, I think safety in some of those, majority of those buildings had a lot to do with it too. So, you know, you have to make sure that our public is safe and...
But those...
Most of those were, under my reading here, those were mobile homes. Manufactured homes are different than mobile homes.
Yeah.
Mobile homes is usually a single wide trailer. I don't know that they make double wides in a mobile home, but I think that's where the age deal was, I think, was on those, more than the manufactured.
I'm going to have to open the public hearing, we're still discussing it before.
Okay, I just wanted to add my two cents about the five years. That's what our HOE is.
Yeah.
You can't bring anything in there.
And we're not talking about resale. If you have a mobile home that's seven years old and you sell it, somebody else can move in it, we don't have any say on that, is that correct?
Once it's in its grandfathered in, it's...
Well, sure, no.
...disrupture. And that's just the issue I'm looking at, is a manufacturer with two-by-four interior, two-by-six exterior, the plumbing's good, it uses copper wiring, it meets all codes, if it's seven years old, so why do we choose five when a seven to, almost a 10-year-old will still meet the standards? I think we went with a five-year, like Tommy and Ted...
Why seven? Why not 11? Why not 12? Why not 15? I mean, where are you going to draw the line?
Well, as long as it meets code, I think it should be fine, as long as it meets code. I mean, that's where you draw the line. The house is either up to code or it's not.
I know there are a lot of places...
About the age limit there.
There's a lot of places in municipal towns in Penale County now that also have something similar, because we were running into the fact that people wanted to move in their mobile homes that were older into a mobile home park in their town. And I think Casa Grands got an age limit too on theirs.
Then we need to look at different criteria rather than just the age.
Are we talking mobile homes, or are we talking manufactured homes? That's what I'm saying, you know, it's, you know, I can see on a mobile home, you know, yeah, they get, they do get deteriorated after a while. But I know a lot of manufactured homes that are 25, 30, you know, years old, 35 years old, that look great, I mean, that's, you know, and that are up to code. I mean, a lot of them are built out of two-by-sixes.
Well, I think code was only a part of this, and I think a higher standard is what we were looking at as far as aesthetics in bringing these things into the town. That's, I think, the main reason why this...
Well, we have codes to keep things up to standards, that's what I'm saying. I don't know about an age...
Not just a code standard, but an aesthetic standard, a standard of appearance of the town.
Now, you know, and listen to...
Other words, you're saying that you think that manufactured homes bring down the standard of the town?
Once they reach a certain age, I would say yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Why? I mean, as long as they're maintained, you know, what's, why would that...
We don't have an issue with the ones that are in town and that are being maintained. We want to control what's coming in from the outside that we don't know what we're going to get.
Well... I think we need to change the criteria rather than just the age, and look at the aesthetics and how you identify aesthetics of a home that should not be placed in Florence.
As long as it meets code, I think you're fine, bottom line is. I don't think we need to put age limits on anybody's house, or, you know...
And see, that's where I don't know if you could set a policy on aesthetics.
As long as it's up to code, I think, you know, we're, I think we're overextending our reach here.
Can you do surveys or get us the information on the five years from other municipalities that have age limit restrictions on modular homes, manufactured homes, mobile homes? Can you get us that before we do anything on, this is just the first, is this first...
It's first reading, public...
It's reading, we don't have any, this is a public hearing, we don't have any action tonight. So before we make any decision, can you get us that information on the age factor of other municipalities around, please?
Mayor, council, I'd be happy to do that. And then also, I'll tell you, in regards to the aesthetic issue, there wouldn't be really a mechanism to review the aesthetics on a manufactured home. There's no mechanism to do that through a DR or aesthetic process, there's no code mechanism to allow that. So in our code, though, we could regulate whether we allow them or don't, or we don't allow them, or we're able to regulate on where they can go, and we're able to regulate on the age, but not necessarily on the aesthetic or the value of the home.
Just get us the age, whatever you can find on it. Would that be okay with...
Yeah, I think the age is the only tool that we have as far as regulating the aesthetics.
Any other? Okay, this time I'm going to open the public hearing. Denise, please, I'm sorry. You might have some information, make us all awaken.
Denise Colart, Florence Gardens. We do have a law in our HOE rules that nobody can bring in, you know, they can buy a lot, the house has to be new or no older than five years old.
And that's in Florence Gardens?
In Florence Gardens. But there are a lot of homes, I live in one, it's 15 years old. But I think people, you know, mobile homes used to have a very bad connotation. If you had a mobile home, you were trash. But mobile homes, manufactured homes, whatever you want to call them anymore, are made, some of them are made better than stick-built houses are, because they're not just slapped together like some stick-built houses are. The main thing is you got to take care of them. So I kind of lean with Ruben. Five years is kind of a, not a good idea, or I shouldn't know if I say a good idea or bad idea, it's just kind of a tight idea. A 10-year-old manufactured home, if it's, is aesthetically and how it's been built is very good compared to years past. I mean, if this was 1980 and you were saying 10 years, you wouldn't want it. But this is 2013. You're talking about a house that was built in 1980. want it. But this is 2013. You're talking about a house that was built in 2003, to very rigid HUD standards anymore. Because when a manufacturer's making a home, they have to follow HUD standards. They can't get the HUD tag, the manufacturer, from the, to put it in somewhere. It goes to the state, and the state has to say, yes, they have followed those qualifications. So they're real strict about building homes anymore. They really are. Probably more sold than your stick-built places.
Good, would you say that there's manufactured homes out in the Florence County area that the selling price is over $100,000?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I think it...
And there's some that are a lot, your older ones are a lot less. But yeah, there's...
And then I would assume that there are homes here in town that are being built, being sold for less than $100,000. So, you know, the value of it doesn't mean anything. I think it, the five-year is controversial. I think we need to find out an average, or see what other communities do, and we can amend this if we need to.
Is there any way in your ordinance that you could say they have to be ground set? Is there a reason in town they couldn't be ground set? So they blend into the rest of the community homes?
I'd like that. I don't know if that's in the ordinance.
That's just a question, because I think, I've lived in both, because we had one in the valley, in Mesa. Single-wide versus we have the double-wide now. And I just think the ground set, they just look more aesthetically like a home.
Yeah.
Okay? And so maybe if that could be part of the ordinance, not for what's here, but if anybody wants to bring one in, so that it would be, it would blend in with the rest of the community.
I agree with you.
And you can stuccle them. They, you know, people stuccle them. We've got a few in Florence Gardens that they stuccled. They...
I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Any other members of the audience have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none, no other, anything else from the council? Close the public hearing. What do we do, mess up? Oh, where's the fire chief? I guess now we're gonna have a public safety presentation by the Florence Fire Department.
He's gonna try and top the Florence Police Department's presentation.
Now, he can try, but we know, we know that law enforcement always overfire.
Careful.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you the status and the plans for your...
You need to speak into your mic.
How's that? Is that better?
Yeah.
One of the things that I wanted to bring up first, that I did when I first got here, as I started to review the fire department and look at a lot of the different operations that we do, one of the things that I realized is that we are a fairly busy fire department for a two-station fire department. As you can see, from July 2012 to June of 2013, we ran almost 3,500 calls in the incorporated town boundaries. So when you think of Florence being a small town, it was actually really surprising to me to see how busy of a fire department we are. And I broke down all the different calls as far as classifications go, and you can see what's most interesting is our EMS calls, and almost 2,000 calls alone for emergency medical services. This chart, what I wanted to illustrate to you is how our call volume has increased over the past couple of years. You can see, I put 2011, 2012 up there, and as you can see, as of right now, between January and July, we're almost to the point that we ran for all of last year. So we're on schedule to do about 4,200 calls for this year. So we are getting progressively busy, busier every year. Over my three-month evaluation, I tried to break down some of the strengths that we had in our fire department, and some of the weaknesses that we had that I could start working to correct. One of the biggest strengths that I can tell you is that you have a very professional staff in your fire department. They're very dedicated to what they do, and they're very knowledgeable about what they do. We have newer equipment, thanks to you. We have our new ladder truck, and as you can see here, our new engine company, and our new station being built. So that helps me as far as managing the budget for maintenance, and keeps those trucks on the road providing service. One of the other good things that we have in the department that I noticed is that we have a very good working relationship with our public safety departments. With DOC especially, we've been meeting with them on a monthly basis. And for law enforcement, we're all very much together, and what we do is we have a very good working relationship. But with that does come a couple of weaknesses. One of our main weaknesses that I've noticed is that the reporting and record system that we've had in the past is very difficult to gather information and to actually export it, so I can have real usable data. So one of the things that we've been evaluating is different systems that I can bring into the department, that we can actually use usable data to figure out where we're weak and how to improve. One of the capital improvement projects that I have for this year is to bring emergency electronic reporting for patient care into the department. The problem is, it's a very cumbersome program to make sure that we're following all the guidelines. So we're evaluating three different ones right now, and hopefully make a decision by the end of this month to bring that to our department. And the last thing was our training records. We've been using target solutions to track all of our firefighters' trainings and all of their accomplishments. So we finally got that down to a more manageable level that I can accurately figure out for ISO ratings and stuff like that, that are coming up, what our training records are. So here's some of our plans that we have. As you can see from the slide, the reason we put it up there is we totally revamped our training room to make it very usable and to make it very training-friendly. So thank you to Dan for getting this done for us. One of the big things that I realized when I got to the department is we have a brand-new ladder truck coming here this month. It should be done by the 13th. And we don't have any nationally standardized engineer training for our guys to be driving the truck. So one of the things I have coming in this month to start is a nationally accredited course for pump operator, mobile water supply, and an aerial apparatus class that the guys will complete prior to the aerial apparatus going into service. It's all taught from Texas A&amp;M. They'll be coming to our facility. We've actually been given a teaching certificate for the town of Florence to be able to hold all of those classes here. So it was a very big accomplishment for us. Another thing that we did is we went through our officer development curriculum. We looked at a lot of different systems to get our captains trained to the level that they should be. And one of the very big things that we did is the Virtual Incident Command Center and the Blue Card Certification that all the guys, all the captains just completed, involved in getting their NIMS Level 5 and Level 4 certification for Incident Command, which kind of focuses on basically what we do every day, our typical house fires, commercial fires, and those type of things. So like I said, all of our captains just completed it this year, and they've got a three-day, pretty grueling testing process to go through to get their certification. And then with that, Texas A&amp;M will be coming in probably around November, December, to start the Fire Officer 1 and 2 series, which again is a national pro-board certification for our officers. We have a hazardous materials technician class getting taught through the county. I partnered with the county. I got on the local emergency planning committee for Penale County. Most likely, we'll be adding some hazmat equipment from that, and also some free training to bring our hazmat certification levels up. We also formed a training development committee with a couple of members of the department, where we started going through every promotional position in our department and setting higher standards for the qualifications that they need to have before they promote to those positions. I thought it was actually gonna be a fairly simple process, but we actually got through recruit to full-time firefighter, and we had to stop there. So we have the engineers and the captains to go. One of the very exciting things that I accomplished since I got here is our training agreement with CAC, which gives us the ability to hold classes here at the Florence Fire Department while getting our guys free college credit as we do that. If we use our own instructors to teach, all of the guys that, from our department that go through that class, get the class for free, they get free college credit, and in turn, I bill them back for the time that our instructors are teaching and the rent of our facility, and it turns out to be a wash in costs. So a very big agreement that we just signed with CAC. Another thing that actually just came up with Central Arizona Colleges, I got in agreement with them that we have, we started doing some of their training for their SCBA's for some of their new students that are coming in, which was very appreciative of them. So we have a good working relationship with them. As far as operations, just like I said, we have a very good working relationship with our prisons and jails. We're developing emergency response plans for all of the correctional facilities right now, which are going very well, as you know. I just, we just completed writing our SOPs for Volume 100 and 200, which are the standards for how we operate. The Volume 2 series is about 1,500 pages long on how we run a fire ground, very cumbersome. And the Volume 100 is how we deal with personnel. So we got both of those done, and very exciting. Prior to me getting here, the, actually, the guys in the department were coming up with a professional standard book, which is basically something that I didn't bring to the department. The department started before I got here, which basically outlines the behaviors and the ideals that the department wants to have, and again, more professional standards that they want to see in their fire department. As many of you know, we have a very big part in the active shooter drill that's going on at Poston Butte this month on the 25th. I'm gonna be an evaluator for that scenario. We will have one of our trucks up there. You guys are more than welcome to come if you decide they're gonna have a very big, open area where people can come to observe, to see how all the county entities come together and deal with a mass shooting incident at Poston Butte. And one of the other things that we're really doing right now is evaluating our radio interoperability with our other fire departments like Mesa and Phoenix right now, to make sure that if we do need help down here in the future, that we have an ability to communicate with them. On the administration side, I apologize, this was an old picture of the ladder company. The ladder company is actually done. It has a big ladder on it now, but this was an old picture that they had just sent us. As you know, the battalion chief hiring, we did in August, we hired a gentleman named John Kemp, who's coming to us from Arizona Central, or Central Arizona College. John spent a lot of years in the fire department with Healer River. He left as a battalion chief, so has the battalion chief experience, and also has a long history of fire marshal experience also. John's gonna be in charge of doing our fire marshal duties right now, because we have a lot to do. His first job will be going to the state and getting deputized, so he can start doing inspections on our state buildings and the correctional facilities. Part of this testing process, we did at the Mesa Community College. We had a tactical scenario and a pretty grueling interview process. So John did very well. We have a captain's test coming up at the end of this week. We have four candidates that are gonna be getting on the promotional list for captain in our own department. We have some pretty qualified guys that are going through that testing also. We just completed a firefighter testing process for our recruits. We had 13 people come and test, and 12 of them passed. So we're gonna have a pretty good list of part-time people to hire from. One of the things that was actually pretty exciting, I received a phone call when we were talking about the fire academy and how we were to get these guys trained up to the level of them becoming recruits. I got a phone call from the fire department in Casa Grande, and a lot of the departments are calling us because they're interested in doing a regionalized fire academy with all the departments in Penale County, so we all set the same standard, and we all run the academy together. So that'll be an exciting process in the future if it pans out. As you can see, the fire station, too, they're getting ready to pour concrete this week, so I'm pretty excited. They're actually gonna see floors and a roof on that place after so long of us waiting for them to move dirt. So it's very exciting. The gentleman that's up there, as long as our super says that we don't get any more rain, he says we should be early to get the fire station completed. We're looking at about February or March, as of right now. And again, the ladder company is pretty much done. It'll be done on the 13th. We fly back to do the final inspection on it, and then hopefully it'll be here right after the 1st of October. So just to go over some of the capital improvements, last year, we had a Station 1 remodel. The bathrooms were remodeled. We got new bay doors. We painted the interior. Our training room was completed. The concrete apron, like you can see in the back, was completed, which gives the guys the ability to not have to back into the bay anymore. This will be really important, because when the new ladder goes in service, it'll be coming down here to Station 1, because we did some measurements at Station 2, and we had about six inches of clearance between the front and the back of the truck, and the temporary station. I just thought that that was too narrow of a margin to be back in something that big. So the ladder company will run down here until Station 2 opens. 2014 for this year, we have SCBA Communications, a capital improvement project. Our new heart monitors just arrived, that the mayor and council approved for this year. So the guys are almost done with training, and those will be going on the trucks probably by the middle of this week. And as I said, our emergency patient care reporting system will go into effect this year. And lastly, one of the things I wanted to talk about is the TRB. We're running this rescue truck three days a week right now, in an effort to try to take some of the call volume off of our larger apparatus. I have to tell you, when we first put this truck in service, everyone was kind of up in the air about how busy this truck was gonna be. By 2:00 in the afternoon on the first day, they had run nine calls. So I think it shows that it's taken the load off of what we needed to. It's being run first out down here at Station 1, staff with an EMT and a paramedic. As I said, it was placed in service around the second week of July. What this truck really, really gives us the opportunity is when we do do a lot of our correctional facility calls, a lot of times the engine kind of gets stuck in the confines of that gate. So what this does is that this truck will go, and it'll free up the engine and the ladder company, so they don't have to get stuck behind the fence. So that was really my presentation. That's kind of a short and sweet update on what we've done and where we're going. Any entertaining questions?
I'm just curious, what's the emergency standby? It says 899 calls. What is that exactly? I mean, I'm just curious.
Those are actually a mix of different calls. Those are move-ups that we do up in the Copper Basin, coming back and forth. There are also move-ups that we do from Station 2 to go halfway to Station 1. They're a mixed match of different calls that we run. And that's one of the challenging things, is when they're entered, it's hard to differentiate based on how they're classified, as to what those calls are, whether they're move-ups, whether they're standbys for other agencies, and what they are.
In other words, if there's guys out of the station, you mean another truck goes over to that station and stands by?
Yeah, typically what happens, so for instance, if Station 1 runs on a call, the ladder would move halfway to cover both areas, just to make sure that our response times don't get too long coming from Station 2. Do we do that every time the truck...
Well, no, I was just, I was curious what it was. I didn't know.
Go back to the first screen on your stats, this one here. This where you're talking about, right, Bill?
Yeah, the 899.
The majority of those 899 calls are associated with, a lot of them were EMS calls.
Okay.
So, you know, you've got 1,900 right there, or 2,700, if you add the two together. But it's really the 1,941 EMS call. But there are others, some accidents, some house fires, and then there's some for rural metro, we back them up, too. But a lot of that 899 is standby on EMS calls where, it looks like there's two, but there isn't.
Well, I didn't know. That's why, yeah, I understand it now.
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. Every time an EMS call kicks out, if it's in Station 1's area, it does create a move-up, which is a separate call.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Now we'll take a vote on who did the best, police department or the fire department. Oh. I think if we had a vote on it, it'd be a tie.
Item 9, Consent Agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of public ejects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, Authorization to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement for Sharing Aerial Proptography and Topographic Mapping Between Penale County Flood Control District and the Town of Florence. Item B, Receive and File the 2013 Municipal, the Florence Municipal Court Independent Audit. Item C, Approval and Acceptance of the Registered Demands Ending July 31, 2013 in the Amount of $3,79,662.30. That, Mayor, members, council, that is your consent agenda for this evening.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent? I just have one question on item A, no, excuse me, item B. Usually when we have an audit, we have the auditors here to explain it. How come this is on a consent agenda?
This particular audit has been on the consent agenda for the last, since we started doing it. It's an independent audit that they come in and do for the municipal courts. It's not at the time of our regular audit.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second?
We have a motion and second to prove the consent agenda is written. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10, Unfinished Business. A discussion approval/disapproval of Ordinance Number 602-13. This is also the second reading of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the Territory Square Zone Change, PZC-0113ZC. The first reading was held on August 19, 2013. Mr. Eckhoff will be handling this item.
Mayor, council, I don't really have anything...
Mayor, council, I don't really have anything more to add to the presentation, but I'd be happy to, that we went over last time, but I'd be happy to address any questions if you have any.
First, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 602-13.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number 602-13. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. You know, in the paper last week on the headlines, it said homeowners are redlined out of prosperity because of us not taking First Street in. You know, that land over here was zoned several years ago when we were going through it with the, I think it was the London Group. So, you know, that was already done. This isn't something that we were trying to keep anybody from prospering, but this development, I think, will help the town as a whole. It will help the whole town. I think everybody's property value will go up. So, I just wanted to, I thought that was kind of a misleading headline saying that the town redlined people out of prosperity. That's the furthest thing from the facts, but...
I'll add to that, too. You know, when the concept came up, I think the original intention of this project was to take large portions of land that belonged to some of the major property owners out there and come up with a solution for taking them out of the floodplain. And, you know, there was a lot of work done to come to this point. I don't think that any of the properties that are on First Street are within the floodplain. So, I don't know the reason why they would have even been considered as part of that project. I mean, we're looking at this large conceptual thing to maximize the use of property that's in a floodplain, so...
And I agree with what you're saying. Going back to 2001, acquisitions, purchase, donations, parcels for this purpose has already been going on. We've had continuous discussion, and I do not feel that they were redlined out.
I've got one question on the map. We take a look at the map. Do you have it there? Parcel number 20040060. It's been lined out. If you take a look at the description of that parcel, it says the Town of Florence? Or is that Robertson's, no, it's Robertson property, correct. So, Kelly's five acres there is not going to be rezoned. Is that my understanding?
Mayor, members of the council, at this time, the property owner is having a, I guess to summarize, kind of an ongoing discussion with the Pinell County assessor and didn't want to jump into a rezoning action on the property until that discussion was resolved. So, at this point, that particular property is being excluded from the zone change, but we hope to be coming back and adding it back in. It's certainly part of the master plan and certainly part of the COMAR process that we're doing.
We're including that in the COMAR process, though. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 11, department reports.
Does any member of the council have any questions related to the department head chair according to the reports?
Not on the actual report itself, but I did just want to talk to Wayne and ask if there's anything that we're doing for the flooding that happens along Hunt Highway by the hospital. I know Mayor Rankin had brought it up once before. In this past Friday night when it was raining, that whole road became flooded again.
That was unique. I'm sorry.
Wake up.
Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, councilperson. Basically, that fling was due to the two-plug conduits across Hunt Highway that were installed by Polte. They're still part of the Polte project, and those two culverts that gone, that went in the east-west direction, just north of Franklin, was entirely plugged, diverted all the flow to the south. We're going to look at the siltation that took place in the retention pond on the northwest corner of Franklin and Hunt Highway to ensure that it's performing as a stilling basin to remove that silt. Previously, what we had in there was a diversion ditch to take the water that came from the north into that area. So, hopefully, that will resolve the problem. We started that effort last sun, on the 2nd, which was Monday, and then today, we told Polte to get back in there, clean out the culverts, and we're due for inspection on Thursday of this week of that retention pond, and that should resolve the problem. All the flow north of Franklin should go due east and bypass the hospital territory.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Wayne, I don't know if this is you or if this would be Mark, but anyway, on the bank down there, you know, on the Butte, you know, they've had those curbs formed for about three weeks, and they haven't poured them. I had, no, I mean, I had a lot of people ask me what's going on, and I'm just curious if anybody knows. I mean, I know that's ADOT's deal. That's not the town, but I'm just curious if anybody knows what the hangup is. I know we've had a little rain, but...
Mayor, members of the council, that is, the delays that we experienced were because of some of the inner workings with ADOT on the Butte frontage. But ADOT assures us that this week, actually, they're getting the project back on track. The delays were related to handicap accessibility, the height of the walk button on the signal there, some electrical issues, a couple of other items, and they had to go back into the engineering and permitting stage and go back through that process with ADOT. But I believe, actually, I saw workers back out there today after kind of a long hiatus, and I think we're on track now, and the work is progressing and should get done soon.
Okay. It's a typical ADOT deal.
Now, we're going to go on Wayne. Again, ADOT, give us an update on the two projects that they're supposed to be doing on the two roundabouts here in town. We had that meeting, and they said they were going to have something done. I don't want to have to go back to another State Transportation Board meeting and start screaming again.
My last, Mayor Rankin, my last conversation with the district engineer is basically they're still in design on it. They haven't finalized the design. Once the design is finalized, they intend on constructing right away. I asked them for a time period. We didn't get a time period for when that design would be completed, and that was about 10 days ago, I think, as I recall my last conversation.
Are you talking about the one at 7...
79, 79B roundabout, the T intersection at that location.
You're talking about the one out on 79, not the one at 287?
That's correct.
And how's the one at 287 going?
We have a meeting on Thursday, and we still, ADOT's local government section needs to choose a consultant for that design, and I assume that will be the basis of the meeting on, I think it's Thursday, right? Jess, yeah, Thursday. The meeting is this Thursday on both roundabouts.
Okay. Wayne, I will direct you to contact that state engineer down in Tucson and tell him if he doesn't have me a date this week that I will be at the next State Transportation Board meeting.
It'd be my pleasure, Mayor.
That's the only way you're going to get him to do anything is just, that's it. Any other member of the council have any other, this will be the second call to the public. Anybody from the public have anything to say? We have the same admissions as it was under the item number seven. Send nothing. Our close call to the public, call to the council, Tommy?
Ruben? Yes. Last week, I attended the Florence Unified School District First Annual Inaugural Event, and it was really interesting that they all united as all the schools for the elementary school, A8 schools, and the two high schools. They presented all the activities that they did in each one of the schools, and what's interesting, what they pressed a lot was doing more with less. I mean, the funding's not there anymore. They've had a lot of cutbacks. They discussed about the bus routes that they had to take and the times that the schools had to start, and the biggest push they're really looking for is some support from the community on the next override election. And I think that's something that we should really look at and say, you know, what is the city, I'm sorry, the Town of Florence going to do to assist in helping our kids to get a good education? So, that's something we can look at.
Thank you. Laura?
I don't have anything to...
Bill?
Nothing.
Tara?
I attended the same inaugural event with Ruben and Vice Mayor Smith. It was very well put forth and put together, and not to reiterate everything Ruben says, it was a wonderful turnout.
Don?
If you look at how far our school district has come in the last few years to being one of the top Florence Unified School District Number One in the state, they have come a long way and done a great job. We do need to support them. The other thing I'd like to say is, Wayne, I said, let these go with you, because I know working on that project down on Main Street has been a real hassle. You guys are doing a great job, and I want to thank our volunteers from the police department also, who've been down there helping direct traffic and help people out. And I think once it's done and it's painted and they can see where they are, they'll be doing just fine.
Wayne, I've got to say that they're very cordial to the public. I appreciate that the way they're handling the traffic down there and talking to the public. Three of us attended the Arizona League Cities Convention this past week. Very educational. A lot of information was gained. A lot of contacts were made. Put a lot of rumors to rest, and we're just looking forward. We appreciate the patience of the people for putting up with the construction along Main Street, but if we're going to make Main Street better, we're just going to have to put up with it for a little while. And then as soon as we get this done, then Jess is going to have that streetscape project going right away. Right? That's what I thought. And just remind people that we, at least it's September 9th, the annexation meeting at the Anthem School. What time? 6:00. Invite all the people that are interested in the annexation, especially people from the areas we're annexing. Please be there and ask questions. Also, like to put out to the people that may be watching this on television in the annexation zone, rural metro takes, needs to keep themselves at home and stay away from town business. They need to stay in rural metro area and stay out of the town's business. With that, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.